They need the same thing.
Yeah, I borrowed somebody's from the job site and like give me the dirtiest paragraph.
Oh, yeah.
You're a work owner, worker man.
The hammer and nail.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, this morning she said, yeah, there's just one week of paragraph.
Well, this special commission meeting of the Grand Fork County Commission. We order and we had two items on our special agenda today. First of all, it's, uh, Compters Ross and Ruston are in the role here. Uh, social mahogany is on Zoom. Is that, do you, uh, commit for beach? Are you there? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
She is, alright. Whether it's all commissioners or present. And so the first item is the Heartland Acres lease. And we'll start by turning this over to State's Attorney, who's one of the.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I guess, just to kind of begin, um, over the last few weeks, I have worked with Mr. Hubner, um, Anthony's attorney in drafting the lease agreement for your review. Just as kind of a high level overview, it's a pretty relatively complex agreement that we, hammered out in pretty short order for the, the nature of the agreement. So it's, it's not only a standard lease agreement, it also includes the option to purchase at two, separate times throughout the duration of the lease, one at the five year mark, one at the 10 year mark. Um, the agreement also contemplates a pretty significant financial investment that the county is making upfront. So 1.319 million in project alternatives that the board has discussed previously. Um, throughout this process, there are some things we worked through, um, some questions regarding the legal description due to, kind of, there was a replot and then, uh, association covenants that, uh, redefined the legal description based on the plan of, of how the development would be created. Um, there's also a deed restriction, um, from when, uh, particular parcel of land was submitted from the prior owner to Mr. Hubner, um, that we've kind of needed to work on and incorporate provisions in the agreement. And then, like I had indicated, there's also covenants on the subject property, um, making it a part of a association, uh, agreement that is a recorded document on the table. Um, so just to kind of overview, um, what this agreement provides for is, like I had indicated, it's a 10 year lease. Incorporated into this lease is an option to buy at two different time periods. The five year mark and the 10 year mark in the amount of $5 million. Um, if the county elects the option at either, uh, point in the duration of the lease. Under this lease agreement, it provides that the county would pay, uh, all property taxes on the property. Utilities, a security deposit of one month's rent, uh, paid upfront. That was the minor change that came this morning. If you haven't checked your email from what I sent yesterday. Um, it just moved the date from when that security deposit would be moved from the time of occupancy within the prior draft. And the most recent draft provides that it paid on or before December 31st this year. The lease agreement also provides that the county would be responsible for fully insuring the building. Um, with Mr. Hubner, uh, added on the county's insurance policy as an additional covered party. Um, and then the, uh, agreement also contemplates, uh, executing a supplemental agreement to, um, kind of explain and define how the expenditure of that 1.319 million in additional accessories would be, um, utilized in, in kind of the provisions of, of that portion of the funds. Which we have not, uh, drafted at this point and I'll kind of explain further. We didn't feel like we had all the details on, um, that dollar amount as to how the commission wished to expend it and, and the authorization the commission would be given for, for that, uh, sum of money. So, um, that's kind of the high level overview. You know, I, I would, a- as the county's attorney, I think it's important that I also advise the board of the legal risks or, or concerns regarding, um, the agreement if the board elects to, uh, sign off on the agreement. Um, I think, you know, there are some provisions in here that, uh, an individual citizen, uh, it would be a cause for concern and I, I think it's even more important when we're dealing with public funds that we are extra prudent with, uh, the risks that we, uh, choose to undertake. So I'll just kind of hit the high spots and, um, go over some of these, uh, legal risks that I've identified in, in this transaction. But before I do so, I, I want to be clear, um, that this is in no way a reflection of Mr. Hubner. I've worked with him and his attorney in drafting the provisions of this agreement and he has been absolutely wonderful. I don't necessarily have concerns regarding him individually, just generally based on, on the structure of the agreement. Um, so setting the parties aside, here are some, uh, risks that I think, uh, you should be aware of. Prior to electing the option to purchase, there's quite a bit of legal cleanup that would need to take place for the county to, uh, purchase the property. Um, for example, with regards to legal description, uh, Mr. Hubner and his attorney would need to work with the city to update the address and record, uh, second amended declaration of the association covenants. There may be a need for an additional replot as well. The county likely is not interested in owning a property that is subject to an association and the covenants, so that would need to be unwound and this property would need to be removed from the association prior to, um, a purchase. Um, which can actually be a somewhat complex and lengthy, uh, legal process to undergo. Um, so that's something you should be mindful of. There's also, as I had indicated, a deed restriction on the parcel of property that's subject to this lease. To be specific, um, the deed restriction provided that, um, when this parcel was granted to Mr. Hubner, um, there's a number of, uh, uses that, uh, would not be permitted on the property. One of those outlined uses is, and I'll quote directly from the deed, jails, correctional facilities, work release facilities, alternative programs for youth, halfway houses, or any similar type of operation of any kind. Um, the lease agreement, we included a provision under paragraph two. Uh, to be clear, that the purpose that the county would be utilizing this premises for, and, and that's for fulfilling the duties of the sheriff. We specifically excluded, um, the provision under the duties of the sheriff to keep the county jail and the prisoners there on. I don't think it's anyone's intention that prisoners be housed in this facility at any point in time. Um, and that clearly would be a direct violation of the lease or the deed restriction. My concern here is that it provides or any similar type of operation of any kind. Now, to be straight with you, if I were the judge reviewing this, I don't think that a sheriff's department is similar to a jail or release, alternative programs, halfway house, et cetera. Um, however, I'm not the judge. Um, and I think there's a reasonable argument that could be made by the grantor under this deed. Um, that, uh, sheriff's department where prisoners may be coming and going for purposes of transport, fingerprinting, interviews, et cetera. Um, as well as squad cars responding to calls in the, in a fast nature, whatever. Um, could fall under that or any similar type of operation of any kind. My interpretation, uh, might be different than the next inter- attorney's interpretation and situations like that is what rises to litigation. Um, so there is that potential because of this deed restriction that's in place. Um, it's also important to note that this deed restriction runs with the land. Meaning that even after the lease is up, if the county has elected to purchase the property under the option to purchase, this restriction would continue to apply forever. So i- if we're the owners, if Mr. Hubner's the owners, if we subsequently pass it to the next person, this deed restriction is forever in place unless and until the prior grantor agreed to release that.
A question on that, please.
Sure.
Uh, is that grantor still in the area living, et cetera, et cetera, and?
The grantor is the neighbor.
What?
The neighbor, the neighbor in business.
Okay, so has that been approached?
No, um, I, I did visit with Mr. Hubner and his attorney about that because that is a potential.
Yeah.
Is to ask this grantor if they would agree to, um, even a stipulation saying the sheriff's off, we agree the sheriff's office is not other similar use.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, I, I think that's a, a very real option to abate that risk a little bit. And, and so, you know, that's not something that was included in the agreement. Uh, but it's something that if the board wishes, uh, that could be a condition that's included or, or a condition precedent to signing, whatever the board wishes. So that, that's kind of, uh, that item. Um, I, I, as I referenced before, this agreement references a supplementary agreement that we need to, uh, negotiate and, and execute to address the expenditure of that 1.319 million in accessories for the building. Um, now, I, ideally, uh, this supplementary agreement would be negotiated and signed contemporaneously with this lease. Um, by having it after the fact, the county naturally loses a lot of leverage in negotiating that supplementary agreement because we're already bound to lease the property at that point in time. Um, the reason this wasn't, uh, drafted and, and negotiated at the same time is that there's a lot of unknowns for the board to decide with regard to the expenditure of that 1.319 million. Um, so just to, to highlight the, the items we need to know to memorialize that. Um, we'd need to know the scope of the purchase, what, what, uh, uh, type of items, uh, is the county looking to purchase with that money? Um, we'd also need to know, uh, the cost to the county. Is, is this just a direct cost that's passed on to the county or is there any type of procurement fee or premium that's added on to that for, uh, Mr. Hubner's time in investigating different options and, and things like that? Also, you know, is the, is the payment on a reimbursement basis? Or is, when, is it contemplated that the county would be fronting this money to Mr. Hubner so that he may make that purchase? Um, and when, when would the payment be due? Um, also an unknown, we don't know, is the interest rate that would accrue and, and the term at which it would accrue. If the money is due at the time of occupancy of the building or if, if that would be due prior to occupancy, um, we'd need to know how, uh, were these expenditures to be made? Um, if there's somebody such as Sheriff Snyder or otherwise, um, that would be authorized to commit to each purchase as they came along or if that's something that you would want to be brought back to the full Board of Commissioners to contemplate different proposals for each, uh, item selected. And then we'd also want to visit about, um, if this agreement, uh, would want to, um, exclude these from being fixtures to the land. So, um, naturally, anything, um, that is affixed to a property is by default under the law considered a fixture. But is part of an agreement we could negotiate otherwise so that if, at the end of the lease, the county decided to move elsewhere, um, we could include in an agreement that we'd have the right to remove whatever was purchased and bring it along to, uh, the sheriff's department's next home. Uh, so some of those things we'd need, uh, answers to, to memorialize in that supplementary. With relation to that 1.319 million, uh, another legal concern I have is that there's very limited to no remedy of those funds expended. Um, so, uh, these upfront costs are invested on the presumption that the county, um, would occupy the premises and would likely elect that option to purchase. Um, making, uh, the expenditures of those funds useful and logical to the county. Um, with that said, um, the 1.319 million fronted, um, there's little to no recovery if something should go south, uh, prior to our occupancy or prior to our election of the option to purchase. So, for example, again, setting the parties aside, just contemplating different hypotheticals that could occur in the event of bankruptcy, in the event of a fire, in the event of, uh, a certificate of occupancy not being issued due to a building code violation or, or not meeting the standards of, of, of the law. Um, a zoning issue, uh, inability to complete the project, uh, for a variety of reasons. Um, you know, the list could go on and on as to what type of adverse events could happen. In the event of that, the county would have little to no recovery for these funds fronted. Obviously, uh, putting a substantial amount of money at risk should something adverse happen such as that. In addition to that, uh, one provision of the lease that, um, was required for Mr. Hubner's lender, I believe, is that this lease is subordinate to any mortgage or contractor's lien or otherwise, um, that would be placed on this property. So, for example, if the landlord defaults on his loan and the bank forecloses, that bank would have priority to the property over the county or a contractor with a lien on the property or anything, we'd essentially be last in line for recovery based on that provision of the lease. So, um, you know, what that means is if that were to happen prior to our occupancy, we're out that money, money fronted. If that means that happens the day before we, uh, have the option to purchase, we're out, um, the money we fronted and also any rent we paid up until that point. Um, not only does it make recovery of those funds extremely difficult, if not impossible, it also makes it extremely difficult enforcing that option to purchase. So, um, obviously, that's something none of us want to happen or contemplate happening. But as your attorney, I feel I need to advise you of those potential risks as well. Um, and another concern is, uh, to the best of my knowledge, there has not yet to date been any type of valuation on the property. Uh, no appraisal, no assessment of any kind. Uh, if the county chose to elect that option to buy, um, presumably, we'd need to bond for that $5 million at that point in time, whether it's the five year mark or the 10 year mark. Um, we likely would need some avail- valuation or appraisal showing that what we're bonding for is of that value. Um, best practice would likely be to have some type of evaluation before entering into the agreement, especially if, um, the option of purchase is a likely avenue that the county wishes to pursue under the agreement. So, speaking of the option to purchase, like I mentioned, there's that election at the five year mark or the 10 year mark. Um, one thing I, I think is important to outline is that, uh, uh, structure of an option to purchase like that isn't, uh, typical for an option to purchase. A typical option to purchase would be after a certain term. Um, there is an open option to purchase for the tenant or the option holder. Um, it's important to note here that, um, the option is strictly at the five year mark and at the 10 year mark. So if at year seven, the county decided they would like to purchase, that's not an option at that point in time. If you, uh, don't elect it at the five year mark, the county would need to wait until that end mark. It's either or and nowhere in between. Which isn't, uh, a, a typical, uh, setup for an option to purchase. Um, additionally, a typical option to purchase would, would typically make an adjustment of that rental rate and kind of, uh, contributing some of that upfront cost paid in the, in the rental rate into the purchase price. The option here is the same at the five year mark as it is at the 10 year mark. Uh, and so i- in relation to how the structure is set up here, um, Debbie and I have visited, uh, she ran the numbers for the, the various options to do a cost comparison of what the total cost to the county would be if the county elected to purchase at the five year option mark or elected to purchase at the 10 year option mark. Um, to be clear, uh, to kind of paint the, the full best picture, uh, Debbie also, uh, ran the numbers for a purchase to take place on January 1 of 2026. Um, just to give a cost comparison for the different scenarios if the county wished to pursue. Um, to be clear, Ms. Nelson and I visited with Mr. Hubner to see if that was even something that, uh, would be an option on his end. Um, he's, he's not in a place right now to, to commit to that. It's, you know, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but that's kind of, um, my understanding after visiting with him. Um, just because he had indicated, you know, h- his, he is currently, um, under the terms of a loan, um, so he would need to visit with his lender to see if there were early payment penalties or something like that. And then, uh, if there are construction contingencies that maybe he, uh, had hoped to make up during the term of a lease, um, those contingencies he might not know right now, just given the stage of the, the construction. Um, he indicated that maybe March time period, he would have a better idea, but at this point in time, um, that's not something that he's, uh, comfortable committing to or, or, or making any firm determinations at $5 million would be a reasonable number from his perspective at, at this point in time. And correct me if I misstated anything.
No, I mean, I, I think you're fairly accurate with that. I mean, it was something that kind of caught me off guard yesterday because it's never been proposed or discussed prior to yesterday's phone call. So there'd have to be some details worth felt.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm certainly open to questions. Those are kind of the high spots of the items I've noted and feel I should bring to your attention moving forward. I'm, I'm happy to entertain any questions the board might have in relation to the agreement on, on these issues or other issues that, that you'd like in, in your own review of the agreement. Um, I just felt that these high spots I needed to highlight for the board because like I'd stated, I think for an individual entering into such a transaction, um, it's cause for some uneasiness and naturally when we're dealing with expending public funds, um, there's greater scrutiny and, and greater, uh, need for, for prudence. So I wanted you to be aware of all of those high pieces. Any questions?
Ms. Nelson, if you'd like to add something, your thoughts on this?
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Haley, uh, Ms. Womsted, uh, came over yesterday and talked to me about some of her concerns and asked me to put together the costs. After we talked to Mr. Hubner, we had him on the phone. Uh, I did put together some costs and I understand, we don't know what the, the penalty that Mr. Hubner would receive and this would not be an option. We had to find out what that penalty would be. So I put together, um, the cost for the lease that had a buyout of five years. Um, and then the 1.319 alternative is that he would finance that. We don't know what interest rate. And I just put in a 6%. It could be more or less than that amount. It amounted to $57,428 at 6%. Um, and then the, the value of the building, we don't know if it's a $5 million building, but if it was, we assumed it was. And the property taxes that we would have to pay because it's not owned by an exempt entity would be $433,001.75 during that, those five years. And the total would be 11,000 or 11 million, 11.8 million dollars. If we were able to purchase the property and we don't know at what price that would be, but.
Ju- just to interrupt you. So that was the t- full 10 year lease term, that $11 million, correct?
That, no, that would be the five years leasing. Then we'd purchase after five years, pay bonds.
Sure.
For 20. So that, that would be the cost for us. If we leased it for five years and then bought it after five.
Sure.
And what our bond would be. So if we bought it outright, we don't know what the purchase price would be. So I, a year from now, I said 5 million plus the alternatives, the 1.3, so it says 6.319 million. I don't know if it's that amount. If it was that amount, our cost would be 9.3 million. So we would pay an additional 2.4 million if we leased it instead of bought it. Um, on the five year option and the 10 year option, the cost would be almost 13 million. Our cost would, to purchase after one year would be 9.3 again, or a difference of 3.6 million. But like I said, that's assuming the purchase price. I don't know what that would be.
Uh, Chair, any members of the commission? I'll just run through a couple of things that I took, I took notes on, I guess. Uh, maybe I'll just start at the back end with what Ms. Nelson discovered. Uh, there was a committee designated by the county commission to work on what the appropriate action will be to take, what the sheriff's office to fill apply lease, all of things. We spent multiple months meeting, discussing and bringing our ideas to the county commission. And the county commission requested that that group put together a lease. And the county commission requested that that group put together a lease option, RFP, with a ten-year lease. So that is what that group did by direction of the commission. Uh, Ms. Nelson, Ms. Womsted were both in there. The reason that we did not consider a purchase option is because uh, to my recollection, according to state law, if the county was to purchase anything that exceeded four million dollars, it would have to go to a public vote. The county commission was not interested in that. I don't know if there's a way to circumvent that now that we did an RFP and we were engaged in a lease agreement or potentially engaging in a lease agreement. But I don't know how ethical that would be with our our uh constituents that trusted us to carry out a lease, which is what we were doing. The reason that we looked at going forward with a lease agreement is because that's what the county said they could afford, if anything. The reason we chose this option is because it was significantly the cheapest option by far of any of the other proposals. So uh, you know, uh, great work to to figure out what the actual cost is for the county versus the five-year and the ten-year uh purchased with wild option there. Uh, purchasing in twenty twenty-six, I don't even know how that could be considered at this point. Maybe that's something for Ms. Womsted to research. But uh, if we were to do that, would we not have to go to the other people that propose RFPs and resubmit things like we'd start this whole project over from scratch? And I feel like we would just throw in the garbage all the work we did over the last six months with the group that was assigned by the by the county commission to work on this. Um, I'll skip back forward to to uh, to the front part of it, uh, when when there was talk about uh deed restrictions. Uh, we don't house prisoners. We don't have a halfway house. We don't do work for these projects. Uh, those duties of the sheriff are all removed by the county commission several years ago and given to a jail administrator who is now currently Brett Burke Holder. Uh, none of those functions occur when Ms. Womsted read off the list. None of that stuff occurs at our office. Do we bring prisoners over uh to their current sheriff's office in orange garb for interviews? Very, very rare. I was trying to think of the last time we did it. Um, and it was a homicide maybe ten years ago, but I could be missing some. I'm not aware in all of them. Do we bring subjects to our place that could potentially be under arrest or are under arrest and interview them? Yes, that happens. Are they under in orange uniforms? No. Uh, that's the entire purpose of having a attached garage bay with an interview room towards the back of the offices. So we can bring them in, secure area, interview, bring them back out. Uh, we don't house prisoners. Uh, I'm sure Mr. Burke Holder knows the logistics legally on that, the federal prohibition set uh, we would be under. Uh, you know, the point where I know the police department many, many years ago had an inspection, an old jail cell in there that is no longer in use, and they had never used for I don't know how many years, and they had to remove the door and turn off the water and all the things uh to not be in violation of some codes. So I I I don't know how um squad cars responding fast out of the area would violate the deed restriction of housing prisoners and whatnot. I have zero concerns with that. I know probably half the people at Egg Country. I could go meet with whoever over there and find out what we want to do with this deed restriction or if they have any concerns. Right now, I have less than zero percent concern on that. And as Ms. Womsted said, uh, that's just my opinion, and I'm only one sheriff. I don't know who the next one's gonna be or who the next owner of Egg Country will be either, so that could be switching. Uh, regarding the supplementary agreement, uh, talking about how the expenditures are to be set or spent. Uh, if you recall, the purpose of the the RFP was to lay out alternates considered in a sheriff's office. Things that either the contractor would be willing to provide and roll into a lease agreement for the office or that maybe the county would consider paying in advance for them to install. Uh, a fence. Do we need a fence? I think we do. I I don't want to not have a fence to secure our area. It's I think it's just ridiculous to set up over there, but that was built in what, the fifties? And that was acceptable back then. Times have changed as we're all aware of. Uh, if if we're not gonna have a fence, then what why are we doing it in the alternates? All of the the scope of purchase for items regarding the one point three one nine were all laid out in the RFP. Every single one was laid out in the RFP. None of them were not laid out. So the scope of purchase is already designated, and it's actually listed in the lease. Uh, I don't recall what section or paragraph it's under. But uh, in this lease agreement, it refers to the RFP and you'll be held liable to the layout of the RFP. So the scope of purchase has been established. Uh, we're not gonna build any anything special or extra outside of that. Uh, the cost to the county, if you recall, and I'm sure Mr. Hubner would be happy to come up and say again, but he would forward invoices directly to the county. He's not gonna add additional costs outside of, if you recall, the last meeting we had, there is seven hundred thousand dollars set aside to purchase alternates in twenty twenty-five. That has been established. Seven hundred thousand dollars. Anything in excess of that that was agreed upon, the one point three one nine, so I'm not that quick at math, but I think it's about six, six, three, one, right? Six hundred and thirty-one thousand uh nine hundred. He stated that you would add the interest that he accrued on that and provide receipts direct pass-through with the interest in twenty twenty-six. And then it was asked again of him if he would be able to extend some of those into twenty-seven if needed. And he said yes with interest. So uh, that is the cost to the county. There's no questioning what that is. He stated he would pass it on. He he did it with a a fitness project he did with us. Here's your receipt. Send bill me or pay the bill. It's it's saving me, saving me a lot of work. Like, he's taking on a lot more, a lot more than than he should. Uh, when is the, when is the payment due? Well, he's gonna accrue all of those costs prior to July one because we gotta be able to use the building. Like, we're, we don't want to wait till twenty twenty-six to put in bulletproof glass in our lobby, right? So so I don't know, like, we we can't wait for any of that stuff. We can't wait for twenty twenty-six to have our evidence lockers installed for twenty twenty-six. They have a secure armory door installed. He's paying for all of that in advance. So they will all be in there. Um. How the purchases are to be made, uh, I can't remember why I, no doubt, but he's gonna make all the purchases. And from what I understood, the the bills would be sent to the sheriff's office. And we would do it as we accrue all other billing. We would get it. Uh, Ms. Olson in my office would stamp it, write the routing numbers as to what the expense is going to be. I would sign off on it and come to Ms. Nelson's office. It would then be presented to the commission. Like every other, every other bill that is has been carried out. Uh, moving forward onto having a stipulation of the agreement excluding uh, the alternates as a fixture of the land. If Mr. Hubner's not to do that to to put those in, the alternates, then like I said, the county would have to. Uh, I don't know if the county, if we purchased them and we paid somebody to install them ourselves, like, let's just say the bulletproof proofed glass. If at the five-year or ten-year mark, we move out, are we gonna hire somebody to come remove bulletproof glass? Or or other items, the fence? Are we gonna pull fence posts out or move that if if the lease ends? I don't think that's that's logical. Again, I'm not in, I'm not in the business of of buildings and leases.
I am. And if if it's the lunar screwed to the wall, it belongs to the other. That's just the way it is. Uh, it'd be insane to try to uh change that to reflect otherwise. Like he said, we're not gonna be ripping out the fence. We're not gonna be removing windows or doors. So, I mean, in in my buildings, if some amounts of TV to the wall, they didn't bother me a TV. They decided to move out. And that's just the way commercial leases are. That's the way they always will be.
If there are particular items, though, they could be agreed ahead of time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Typically, what what you're saying, offensive, right, as a fixture.
There's a, there's a lot of things are, but a refrigerator is not. So I mean, that's a different thing. There's an enormous satellite on top of one of my properties that serves the tri-state area for their surveying purposes. That's the one item I said, okay, fine, you keep, because I wouldn't have it anyways. But I I know they're not, like you said.
But if there are such issues, they could be taken care of. I mean, we're talking other alternates for security cameras, key card access. That would cause a more significant disruption to the building that we would have to pay and replace than it would have probably just by itself, could be.
Mr. Chair, if I may interject, I I think they're very well-reasoned points um with regard to the fixtures, but I think something that uh isn't maybe a player under the law is furniture. Furniture can be a fixture if it's a fix to the property, which sometimes uh cubicles or it depends on the type of furniture that's obtained. Um, that can be a fixture. Sometimes furniture is not because it's just me uh merely a desk sitting on the floor. Um, I I think that's something that commission needs to contemplate. Is that is at the end of the deal or is that the county's at the end of the deal? Um, so either way, whatever the board decides is fine. I just think that um that should be memorialized in it in an agreement. And I think in visiting with Mr. Hubner's attorney, he confirms.
So if I if I can say something here, um, it was described to me by my insurance agent, Best, maybe, that if you could take a building and turn it upside down, anything that would fall and hit the ceiling is something that you can carry out, you can take with you. Anything that does not fall and hit the ceiling when the building is turned over is a permanent fixture of that building and would remain as such, kind of like what Mark has said. So to answer the question, tables, a refrigerator, chairs, anything that's part of that FFE structure that you can carry out and put in a truck, take it with you if you were to go somewhere. Uh, it's, but anything that's fixed and and talking about like the security cameras, for example, yes, they're gonna be screwed to the wall, so they are fixed. But part of that payment is also gonna be for the wiring that runs from the back of the building to that camera, which is never gonna go anywhere. So uh, I think it's it's pretty simple that anything that is screwed or glued or attached in any way is part of the structure. And I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, we can beat this thing to death, but ultimately, I think the county is probably purchasing it, whether it's the five-year mark or the ten-year mark or possibly something sooner than that. Um. But if we want to write in there that if for some reason something happens that the the chairs can go if they're in the refrigerator, I mean, I have no issue with that whatsoever. Um.
Yeah, I don't want to moonwalk on this lease over cubicles, which in my long history of doing this, nobody takes with them anyways, and I wish they would.
Well, we currently have an office full of them at our current sheriff's office in a building that belongs to the police department. And they're all accustomed to the area. That thing, I don't even know what shape that building is. But our office structure is about the same awkward shape inside, which is why in the RFP, it was stated that none of that would be coming with. I don't know if in our existing mutual lease agreement, if there's anything that states that we have to move those or not. I'm gonna have to figure it out. But there is very few that would that would work in there. Uh, and just a final uh comment, I guess, that I'll make, and then I'll stand if you have any further questions for me, but said that uh rentals are worked into the option to purchase. That's typical, but not in this one. Uh, we're very aware that this isn't a typical agreement. Again, the board requested a ten-year lease with an option to buy at the end. Mr. Hubner went ahead and said, well, how about a five-year? Uh, also not typical, as he's not increasing our rent at all over the ten years. As we saw in the other proposals, there was a, I believe, minimum three percent increase on all of those. So yeah, these these numbers look look a little uh hefty outside of five billion. But I believe that the county commission agreed to that because that is something that we're able to afford at this time. What's it, something else?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Just to be clear, in response to to Mr. Russ's question, um, he had stated he doesn't want to hold up the lease agreement for the the agreement, sure, one point three one nine. That's why it was uh set aside to be addressed in a supplementary agreement so that if the board wished to uh sign the lease agreement today, that wouldn't need to hold up the execution of the lease agreement.
Thank you. Like a thanks indeed.
Any other questions of uh? Do you know or there? No, there there was. I guess I can come up. I mean, is there any questions anybody has for me with everything that we've talked about?
I have one question. When would the 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 seven hundred thousand dollar payment, is that that January first?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, that's a question I have before drafting the supplementary agreement is I don't know if that has been clear as to when that payment would be due or the subsequent payments in the subsequent years as well. I think it would be uh best practice for both Mr. Hubner and the county to outline specifically when that expectation is for both parties.
I I agree with that. That's something to decide. Just by agreeing now.
Well, I guess if I can say something, I think what we talked about is kind of like Andy had pointed out that all of these fixtures and equipment are gonna come along before he even takes the key and moves in. So the money, I mean, kind of back to one of Haley's earlier comments of, you know, the county is spending substantial money on something they they don't own, and there might be some risk. And I guess my kickback in that is I'm the one that's spending the money well beyond what the county is gonna pay me in twenty-five to make this happen for the sheriff's department. Who has the greater risk, the county or us? I feel that I have the greater risk in this situation because not only am I fronting money for FFE stuff, but I'm also helping a building that I'm gonna get paid back monthly on. Um, so I think the financial risk is probably greater on my end than it is for the county, technically. Um. But I guess with that being said, the the FFE stuff, I mean, we're gonna buy all those items once they're approved and and they are outlined in the RFP. So I mean, I think there's an outline of everything that we're gonna be purchasing and what it's gonna be for. Uh, yes, we did not outline the exact dollar amount or what brand it is or who's doing what or how much is labor and how much is materials, but that's all stuff that'll come in as we invoice for it. Um. But with that being said, we talked about the county had roughly seven hundred thousand dollars left in the budget that they could put towards that. So if they want to pay me on January first, let's pay it January first. If you want to pay it as I submit invoices, pay it at that one.
I guess that that was my question.
I I'm fine either way. I mean, if it's easier for the county to advance the money and then look at invoices as they come in, or if you want to pay by invoice as they come in. I mean, if we sign a lease today, I mean, invoices are gonna start in December probably because I do not want to hold this project up by waiting for desks or security cameras or something that we need to have installed by July first. Um, so I I'm I'm good with it either way. However, the county wants to do the money, I I'm fine with. And as far as addressing the additional funds, I'm easy to work with that way. So if we spend, let's just say we spend the max budget that was already approved at the last commission meeting. And if I need to carry it for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, I mean, there's gonna be an interest rate that I can't quote you today either because I'm gonna go get an interest rate at the bank. And we're gonna set that money aside in that note, and I'd be happy to turn those statements into you so you can see what the interest rate is, what's occurring, and and what's happening with that, and really a funding this budget allows to pay it out. So as far as I'm concerned, if we need to carry that for five years or ten years, we sure can. I mean, I was the one that originally proposed to have the county, if there's additional money in the budget somewhere, to pay upfront for these and not pay as much interest. I mean, because we could easily roll all of this in the and then it would already been part of this agreement and it would be done. Um, so I guess it's in my opinion that we're doing this the most fiscally responsible way, which is paying for what we can this year or next year and it being a separate deal from the lease. But you know, I guess to me, the big things that really need to be worked out is is who approves what I'm purchasing. You know, I mean, it was my understanding, like Andy said, it would probably be him in his apartment. But if it needs to be somebody else, I mean, to me, that's the thing we need to figure out maybe today. And I I guess if I was unclear about something else, but I think we kind of have how the expenditure would happen or how the payments would happen. So really, the the biggest thing for me is the approval part. But I mean, because you guys have already approved the dollar amount and and you know, so she could, or I can, or my attorney can draft up uh something for you guys to look at, which kind of references everything that we've already talked about.
Looking at a July first, what a date. And I'm not thinking that having every purchase that happens certainly needs to come in front of us. I think some good thing could be used. He's got a budget. He knows his number. And so I would, I guess I would move that we let the sheriff determine the items that are purchased for the project and um, keep the commission out of it, that that up to that one point one, what is it, one?
One point three nine.
One point three nine. Million and and that that's any, um, so that up of that is our proportion if I didn't already state that.
Not sure what stage we're at for motions here. Uh, we have a, had a motion to sign the lease as it is supposedly sits today. And this is a separate agreement. I understand that.
Sorry, I went in the wrong order. So I'll move, I'll move that we sign the lease and then that second motion.
What's the meaning you like to respond to that before we have a second?
Just procedurally, to be clear, it it might be best to withdraw your first motion and then make a new.
You think it was my rookie year. So I think all my first motion I made.
And there wasn't a second, you can do that.
Yeah, there's nobody like that one anyways. And so I'll I'll make a motion that we sign the lease um. In its current form. Let's say with heartland acres. Um to perform with this project with the signature of the sheriff.
Is there a second?
Second.
This uh. Handle the additional agreement that you're gonna be working on.
I I can certainly work on it. Um I would need some answers to some of the questions that I've always.
Well, let's, I I have one question and it's kind of an awkward question.
Sure.
But what if something happens to you in March? And you can.
Well, two things. She's sitting right there. She's also on the lease, Kirsten Huber. So she would honor if something happened to me or I would honor if something happened to her. So there's two parties that are already involved.
But you'd be able to be able to be built.
Absolutely. Yeah. So I mean, as you can see, I'm dressed. I'm I'm working on it today, but there's several people that are doing the same thing. Okay? So it's gonna be built. Everything is gonna go fine there um. The other thing is, I just want to touch on since you're asking about this. Bigger scope of things, uh if there was any concern whatsoever about, well, what if something happens to me or if there was bankruptcy or what if? It would be in the bank's only interest to keep whatever tenant is in there and paying to be in there. And they're going to come to you. So legally, they have to honor this agreement. If I sell this thing to to you tomorrow. Uh you need to honor the lease that's put in place. So. If even if this thing, if I was to sell it or somebody came and took it from me because I wasn't paying my bills. The county is going to be secure either way because that lease needs to be honored because that is part of the property. Uh so I guess I just wanted to address that quickly. I don't know if that was you for your concern or not, but it was something that she had brought up, I guess.
Well, he's right. The lease agreements always follow the property. What lease agreements always follow the property, so.
And any other uh questions or discussion?
I don't have any at this time. Thank you.
I don't have any questions either. Thank you.
Anything further from you, Nelson, before the, all right. We have a motion second to sign the lease as the. This one that has presented it to us. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Passed unanimously. All right, um. Then we have the second motion on the handling of the alternatives that I think I have to redo that motion because I went through it. All right, and but I'll I'll motion that that sheriff handle his F F N A budget up to that one point three and change. Uh without permission approval. Okay, and the. Second, second.
Um, sure, chair. Maybe just for clarification purposes. Correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding what you're what you're uh. Suggesting is that Sheriff Schneider would be authorized by the board to authorize expenditures. Um for the stated alternatives up to the one point three one nine million. Without bringing those expenditures to the board. Is that correct?
Well, would it be?
The reason for this motion, Mr. Chair, is that I. With a moving date of July one. That sometimes there's a long purchasing. Having to wait in some cases fourteen days for approval for something, probably one month and that we have a whole bunch of. Speculative mission meetings to approve. Or whatever, you know.
If I may, uh so in. Uh paragraph ten, under conditions of the lease that you just approved. It does state in there that the landlord submitted proposal title ground for its county shares to our RFP, which is attached and incorporated into this agreement. And uh he agrees to comply with all conditions stated therein, well, therein includes. The alternates. So the alternates and the amount range is already listed in the RFP. Which falls under your lease. So we can't spend six million dollars. Or we can't spend a million dollars on a fence that I want, then now we get security cameras. The fence amount is already listed in our P.
Is motion even necessary?
Well, it probably is um. Can someone got authorized the fact that there's an invoice to pay?
I I think just the board needs to give the blessing to Sheriff Schneider to sign off. Up to that.
So that's my motion.
Do we we also want to include how the county wants to pay that they want to pay. As I invoice for these items or do they want to pay in a lump sum? I guess I think that was one of Haley's other questions. I mean, if we're doing it, I might get clarification on that.
A good catch.
It would it would it would seem to me to uh. Pay them as they come in as a invoice up there. Uh once he approves it, it's obviously here uh or. Most stuff here, so I'm not sure that. Uh I don't think, I wouldn't recommend that we just pay seven hundred thousand on January first. We have cash flow issues in the county and all of that, so. What do you think about that?
I I think that's fine. I think he just wants to know how not push it one way or the other. To me, that seems perfectly reasonable.
So you're saying payment on a reimbursement basis?
No, uh I think when when something is ordered uh and it's. To be on its way, I don't think you'd have to front it first. How would we handle it that way? Where once something's been ordered and it's manufactured or getting ready to be delivered. Sheriff Snodgrass could just sign off.
Yeah, and I mean, typically when I order something, you know, we might pay for it initially. I'm okay with that. I I there's never been an issue with that. I think. It was actually something that Haley kind of brought up is like, how is it going to be paid with the budget and what? So I mean. I'm okay with just submitting invoices.
Sure.
When we order or install items. Because it'll all happen relatively quickly. I mean, within a thirty day time period from when I pay an invoice. Whether it's labor or materials or what have you. To when I'm reimbursed by the county, I'm fine with that. I have zero issues with that.
The county would essentially be notified that something was being ordered and then that invoice could be sent to us and paid.
Yeah, so I mean, the way that I'm kind of understanding is, you know, I would meet with Sheriff Schneider and and his department and we would. Pick up the security cameras, for example, and I would get all the costs involved with that portion of it. Submit that to him so he could see that. Yep, we're good to go on that. That's everything we talked about. Then we would go ahead and order, get the installation process done. At that point, I would send him an invoice that he could submit to.
That makes sense, yeah. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Mister Chair, I mean, you certainly can do motions on each item, but. If if it's easier, we could just go through my questions. If there's a consensus of the board. Then I can have some direction as to what, you know, I've got a number of questions. I don't know if you want to do. Ten or some motions or however many are needed. If there's just a consensus of the board, I can memorialize the wishes of the board and then you could approve the agreement.
All right, here we go first.
So the other question I had um. Is the interest rate. We want an agreement to outline um. The rate at which interest would accrue. I don't know.
Well, I mean, if I can say something. What I can tell you is I'm going to give you the same rate that the bank gives me whenever we need to roll those dollars in. So the good news is for now, the county has seven hundred thousand dollars roughly to pay invoices, so there's no interest. For that first seven hundred thousand. I'm hoping that can carry us deep enough into spring where some of these rates correct themselves because right now, today, I mean, prime is at seven point seven five. I mean, that that's where prime rate is. I'm not saying I can't get a better rate than that at the bank, but. If that slides down to seven percent in March. And and I can get a rate of six percent or five and a half, that's what I'm gonna get. I mean, I'm gonna secure the best rate I can. For the county, but I don't have that rate today, so that it. If if I have to give you a rate today, it's it's prime, which is seven point seven five today. And I know that that's gonna be a much better rate, but if you have to put a number in there today, that's the number.
What was the rate, seven?
Seven point seven five is prime today. So I mean, that I can guarantee, but you know, I'd like to think that I can get a better rate than that, but you know, that that will be subject to to me and a bank.
I think it'll be going down slowly according to the members.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. Like, if the county has money to spend now. Once we get to the end of that and we have to worry about carrying money, then that's when the interest rate is really gonna become a fact. And it's in everybody's best interest, mine and yours, to wait on locking that in. Because yes, I can make a phone call right now and get a rate today to give you, but that rate is gonna slide by the time we actually need the rate.
So would it be something that would accrue like within thirty days? Payment or?
When's the money available? When an invoice is presented, there won't be any delay. Until that seven hundred thousand is used up, correct? So then, let's see. If we're financing that with six hundred thousand. When would when would interest start on that? I would suppose when he has made the page.
So so really, the the interest is gonna start when we start spending money that the county can't pay.
Right.
So.
I think she wants to know like thirty days you invoice and if you don't get any payment within thirty days, then it starts.
Well, it's gonna start, yeah, okay, so it's gonna start soon as we need to roll that money in. So yes, that would happen. Let's just say, how long is it gonna take?
To get paid?
To get paid from when I submit an invoice.
It goes to commission meeting, so they need the first and third Tuesday of every month, so if I get it Friday or the Tuesdays. Meeting, then it go go to the commission and uh spend a check Wednesday, the following Wednesday. Depends on when the invoice comes.
So let's just say interest is gonna start two weeks after I invoice, once the county is done spending that seven hundred thousand.
There are scenarios where there's five weeks in a month. So there would be a scenario where we'd have the money and it wouldn't be paid.
Well, I'm not worried about when when I'm getting paid on that part. You you were asking when the interest would start on the money that you're not gonna pay me. And so I would like to use the same, like if you if if I'm gonna be paid, say in two weeks or three weeks typically. That's when, if I'm not gonna be getting paid, I'd still give the two or three week grace period to submit those invoices, so. The commissioners can see him and Debbie can see him, but then the interest, instead of writing a check, interest is gonna start. Does that make sense? Is that what you were looking for, kind of, Haley?
Yeah. So is it? Twenty one days later or thirty days later?
Let's just say twenty one.
Um and we've kind of, the other question I have is we kind of touched on this a little bit, but to be clear, um. The question of fixtures, we just want to rely on the standard under the law. We wouldn't want to negotiate anything different for fixtures. Um furniture, is that our property or is that Mister Hubner's property on termination? Because I believe that was one of the items, his furniture.
So once again, anything, so that might mean um something that comes down. From the ceiling for presentation, for example, and if that's gonna be fixed to the ceiling, that's part of the property. If it's the chairs or the table or the refrigerator or the microwave that are all gonna be part of this. Take it with you. So once again, the easiest way to think about it is if you could turn the building upside down, what would fall and hit the ceiling? Take it with you. Anything that's gonna stay affixed to the walls or the ceiling or whatever, so. You can't just define furniture because some of those items might be fixed to the building.
And I guess maybe to be clear with my question is, do we want to rely on the default under the law of fixtures stay with the land? Um and we take any non-fixtures or do we want the agreement to state anything?
I would say just leave it standard and it's. That's my opinion. I don't know. Chair, it's the security of a thought on that, I mean.
I think. I think it's possible to specify five hundred things. Yeah, I think we have to go with the with the legal definition of fixtures. Yeah. And with, we we also assume, I believe, that in most cases, people use a little common sense when they're. Vacating a building or buying a building or whatever, so.
In my opinion, a reason.
We can't anticipate every.
The reason it's the way it is is because if you screw down. Exploring exploring around a bunch of fixtures. If you remove them, you're leaving. Heartland Acres with the floor with a whole bunch of gaping holes in it that. So then he's that there's no chance of repurposing any of that and. I don't know what the likelihood that we even try to reuse some of that stuff would be because you're, you know, the next location would be likely an entirely different layout. And there's uh plenty of old cubicles in the Greater Brentford City dump, let me tell you that.
Um I think one of my last questions is um. I think Andy might have answered this, but just to get clear direction from the commission. Um this is for the items listed in the RFP. Um outlined as project alternatives. It's limited to those purchases, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So I can outline in the agreement that. It's consistent with what was essentially.
Yep.
We'll do that. Believe that answers all my questions.
Yeah, you need a motion on that?
I think you'll be fine. I I just kind of need a direction for the wishes of the board and I'll memorialize all that. Give you all an opportunity to review it and give any edits.
Consensus of the board.
Yeah.
Enough.
Yeah. And I'll run it by Mister Hubner as well, so that.
So just to be clear, that portion of it is not something that needs to go back to the commission for another approval once you're done with it?
The agreement would need to be approved by the board and authorized the chair's signature.
But that's not, that's that's not like the agreement that you're working on now.
Far more simpler than what we.
All right, is there anything on additional on this item? Were we finished with this agenda?
That covers it. Thank you.
I might be able to skip next Tuesday's meeting with some what? I'm gonna be able to skip next Tuesday's meeting. Well, I'm going to. That will be on Zoom.
All right, I guess we'll, are we ready to move on to? Mr. Burcolder?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mister Ruston, do you have some comments you wanted to make before we start on this?
Or, well. Commissioner Ross came to me with a, what I thought to be pretty brilliant. Idea, and so I I I talked with a friend of mine who sits on the board at Altru. But I kind of jumped that. Commissioner Ross's idea was to see if Altru is gonna use all their stuff that they're uh. Going to be likely getting heard of as they move into the hospital. Some of that stuff might be able to be repurposed in our county jail. And it turns out they're gonna have to think about. And so, kind of goes to the guy at my laptop, not me. I just made a phone call.
So Commissioner Ross, what do you, what's your suggestion for how we proceed today?
Okay, well, Mister Burcolder will address it because the fiscal officer at Altru. Well, that information was given to me by Commissioner Rustad and so uh. Mister Burcolder did get ahold of the gentleman at Altru and he'll he'll outline it and talk about it. Uh but I think it's very viable for, I mean, we're gonna save a ton of money. Uh, but I think it's very viable for, I mean, we're going to save a ton of money. I, I believe if Mister Burkholder can, can get with the All True people and. And see what they have, is that probably, I mean, they're talking one part of their deal being donations.
Right.
For the old stuff, uh, which would include the Devil's Lake Hospital too, because I guess that's. The equipment too is going to be considered, so. Uh, I just think. You know, the infirmary could really probably get a lot of free equipment than what we have to spend money for, so.
Okay, all right, Burkholder, Mr. Burkholder. Did everything?
I, I hope so. I think, I think I'm good. Commissioner Hagan, members of the commission, I also want to thank Commissioner Ruston, Commissioner Ross for. What they did behind the scenes. I did have a conversation with CFO, uh, Bobo. And things do look good there in that, uh, I believe. There's a good possibility that we could potentially have some of this equipment donated to the county. I don't speak for them right now because, uh. I don't know that they have. A path to get rid of all the equipment they have, but they're tempted not to move the equipment from the old building to the new. Which means they have a number of pieces of equipment that potentially. We might use or could use. Our current. Uh, F F E budget does have, I believe, two. Exam tables in there for eight thousand dollars, so that would be an immediate savings if we can get those. I did talk with Mister Bobo yesterday and, uh, I will be reaching out to Doctor Booth, Doctor Jamie, our physician out at the. Uh, out at the facility. And it could be that there are other pieces of equipment that might become available. Um, that he would like us to have, but we have never put in our F F E. Because of the cost, so this is great news and I'm going to be working with them, uh. And Doctor Booth to see what potential we might be able to bring and saving us some money. I do want to apologize in the way that, uh, my presentation went last, last time in that I don't think I was clear and I created a lot of confusion. And that's all I think. You were presented with an inter-office bid. Which included a hundred and fifty one items for the correction center, the expansion. I had identified a thousand thirty one items in my F F E way back in May of twenty three. I mean, there's eight hundred and eighty items that are listed in my list of F F E's that aren't in inter-office, and that's what I was trying to do is get directional. How we want to proceed with that F F E. Those eight hundred and eighty items can be anything from garbage cans, monitors, blocks, tables, uh, shelving. Inmate supplies and so forth. Is my hope that. Uh, the commission would allow me. To, as I just did with Sheriff Schneider. To use the vendors that we have for these things. And secure them as soon as we can. Knowing that, for example, Area C will be needed, being moved in in the next sixty days, Area. D. Um. But right now we're looking at July one. Uh, to be able to hire officers. And of course. Area D should be done somewhere near that time as well, uh, after the construction, after we, out of that area. I had, um. Some numbers that I showed you last time and, um. Wait, I, just hold on one second, this screen saver came on. I showed you that I had four hundred and thirty two thousand dollars roughly of F F E, which I included a subtotal. And what I anticipated is inflationary increases, that's how I came up with that number, um. The G M P that was listed in Bay Pack two, which you guys approved in September of two thousand three, had four hundred and five thousand dollars. I believe that was the number that I had way back in May of two thousand twenty three, and I think that some tweaking has happened to that number. To bring it up to four twenty one, then I added inflationary cost to it. That's where that four hundred thirty two thousand comes from. Um. We also have a back to boot grant. That we have been racking our brains on, of how can we use this money? And have a perpetual benefit for recruitment and retention and correctional officers. One of the things that we have identified is right now. We have an old, an old Pepsi machine, an old vending machine, of which we have for the staff, it drinks and food. Neither of them, the vending machine doesn't take dollar bills, only takes points, and the Pepsi machine works with just cash. A lot of people today don't use cash. We believe that using that back to boot. Grant money, we can purchase new equipment. That was in my F F E. Thereby reducing the needs. For, for the county. Making it a, a much nicer place for the staff to work. Therefore, meeting the, the requirements of recruitment and retention. Uh, but also we had identified a, a number of small appliances within the break room and so trying to make it a. Nicer area for those officers to come and have some food and sit down and eat. It's a lot different out there than the rest of the world in a lot of ways, and then at three o'clock in the morning, if you're hungry or. Uh, want something to eat, you cannot leave your post, not go anywhere to get food. You have a product, what you have is what's in our vending machine. We're hoping to expand that, so, uh, we've got hopes already for a vending machine that'll, uh. Frozen entrees or something, so for example, if we've got frozen free book or something. Officer hungry after in the morning has ability to, to do that, so. Using that grant, we hope to reduce. I believe I had about eighteen thousand dollars. I think it will even get more than that out of the town budget of F F E. Bring in the total need. To, let me see here, I had, I had said three hundred and ten thousand. I think we can get below that. Conversations with Miss Nelson, I think we have two hundred and eight five thousand and some change. Left after inter-office. I would, inter-offices bid that was, which was accepted, I would just ask that. Maybe give them permission to get and start ordering all the supplies that we need. To occupy that building. Subject to never crossing the two hundred eighty five G M P, which was approved in September. One of the ways I, I have identified that we could do that is. I had some training tables and chairs in my current budget that we're in for two thousand twenty four for. My current training room that I had anticipated the purchase and then moved to the new one. We never did it. So some of that money can, can help the F F E. If there's a. Dollar reason to, I don't know dollar reasons, but which, which pocket we pay for things. But that would be another alternative we could do is. So, uh, the current budgeted dollars. Make a dent in that. I also have a vehicle that was in this year's budget. I ended to not purchase that. I did not purchase that for a number of different reasons. First and foremost. I've had to reduce my federal prisoners down to. Until the US Marshals, no, no more than fifteen. With that, we're not doing a lot of transports. I've already entered into conversations with some of our federal people and the need is there and the desire is there. For us to hold their inmates and to be able to transport them, so that might be coming in the future, but it wouldn't be next year's, because I don't have it in next year's budget. But that is also. About thirty five thousand dollars. That is available to us. If the budget's out, it would not be spent otherwise. That all being said. The board would so move. We would begin for purchasing. The F F E that's needed, the other eight hundred and eighty items. Not to exceed two hundred eighty five thousand, which will be the, get back to.
Okay, just.
Commissioner Ross.
Okay, does that, does that exclude the stuff that you might get from All True?
I would reduce, I would reduce that.
You don't know what that figure is yet.
Correct.
Right.
It's just something that, that should be approached to a regular commission meeting after. Communicated with the alter, I mean, it seems like kind of a guest situation right now.
Mister Chairman, members of the commission, two hundred and eighty five thousand dollars is in the budget and. As part of the project and he's requesting to spend up to that amount. If, if he can lower it, he would.
Yeah, which, which he will know once he. Gets to All True or, or whatever. That could be re- reduced, but at this time, that would be the cap, two hundred eighty five thousand. Okay. I made that motion. And what's, what, most. Uh, to put it, yeah, to allow him to spend that F F E two hundred eighty five thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Since, my question is, does this even require a motion if it's already at the. He and if he is. Budgeted and already accounted for. What are we actually crafting?
So it's in, in the bond, in the project total, the thirty eight million dollar. Correctional Center project included an additional two hundred eighty five thousand for F F E. That's just allowing him to make that purchase.
Yeah, I do think we need a motion to allow him to, to spread them to the.
Commissioner Russ, members of the commission, I, I have not purchased anything for that. Expansion yet, and I would not without your permission, I just want. I guess I'll second the motion.
Mister Ross, Mister Ruston, any questions? Commissioner Page, Commissioner Hagan?
No, I have nothing.
Any further discussion?
Sorry, sorry, I said no, my foot finger didn't hit the mute button fast enough.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Close. And standing on.
Thank you very much.
All right. I think that's all we have for the day.
I'd like to motion to adjourn if, if it's my turn to say stuff.
Is it over?
Yeah.